Sorry.
It's off.
We attached the back of the robot, so it's out of the way from seeing my phone. And we also have six wheels on the chassis. Because it had trouble, it was falling forward. So we had to put one more wheel on each side for the board to make sure it wouldn't fall forward.
And last but not least.
First, I want to say thank you for letting us use this space.
We did forty minutes.
Thank you. So Aurora also has six wheels because of the same balance issue. And ours, I think, yes, ours is the only robot that has a fluid intake that can expand in multiple different directions. Because the force, it needs the force this way to push the ball into the catapult area. So when it brings the ball in, it extends outward, and once the ball reaches here, it starts to push it onto the catapult.
We have the catapult like theirs, and we have rubber bands to shoot it. And we had a H drive, but we took it out. And it's working perfectly good right now.
Yeah, we're the first team to have a catapult robot. So it can. We have, oh, one of the things we have is a bumper sensor down in our robot. So that when this catapult comes down, it hits the sensor, allows it to walk and race. Then it brings the ball up, and then we hit a button on our controller that catapults it, and then brings it back down. Rather than having a button that while they're holding it, get fired. And that's the vital part of keeping it in place because of the device we use, which is a cheese or something. Which kind of works like a train where it has a gear attached to a beam. And when it brings it around, a pin catches the beam, goes around, and the rubber band force is enough to let it release. It catapults upward and allows us to scrub the walls.
Yeah, awesome. Thanks, guys. So again, if you see the lights on over there, these teams are working hard. We're there Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday in the evenings. And then we have like the open bill day for students to get ready for competitions coming on Saturday. And so, yeah, if you ever are interested and want to swing by there, the lights are on, you want to come see if you have questions. And again, we want to thank you for the community for letting us use that space. And we think that we're going to be able to have some pretty fun outreach stuff coming up this winter. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck with all your competitions.
Yeah.
First one, please let us know how you do, and we'll put your results on our sign. We would love that.
Well, I wish I had an opportunity to go there.
I know, I know. Think of how.
Work myself.
How much you had to.
I do, but just so you know, our Zoom is only letting us record forty minutes at a time. So there will be multiple videos.
Okay.
Okay.
If you don't mind, this is not for public comments.
Okay, Greg.
You had the list, so.
We're going to start real quick with Greg Cromer.
I have to follow that. That's impressive. My name is Greg Cromer. I'm an aerial photographer. I've been working on a quest of sorts to photograph every community in Virginia from an airplane. I just wanted to show off the woman I took here. Normally.
Oh, wow. Wow.
Beautiful up there. I wish I could get more people using an airplane with me, but this seems to be the best way to go. So normally I ask council if they'd like to buy a copy, but I was already told that the answer was yes, so.
Ah, fabulous. Absolutely.
So thank you for that.
Excellent.
And if you'd like, you can see my entire collection on my website at AmericaFromTheSky.com. If that's too much to remember, PilotGreg.com will get you there, too.
Where are you based on?
I'm from everywhere. Occasionally Winchester, St. Louis. Up in Florida County. Yeah, I started about sixteen years ago. I was flying over the town of Broadway, and someone had cut this ginormous wall in the side of the mountain. I said, that's really pretty. That started the whole thing. And now, sixteen years later, in addition to having about three quarters of Virginia photographed colleges and scenic places in addition to the towns, I have about five thousand places across thirty-two states and the Bronx, and so it's a little out of control. If anyone is interested, I have these for sale on the website, and Christmas is coming. If someone loves the town and they're hard to buy for.
All right. Thank you for coming.
Any questions?
Great job.
Thank you very, very much. I'll leave some business cards on the table.
Thank you.
And then should I just follow up with you?
Yep. Yes. Thank you. Uh, yeah.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Tracy Hemstead.
Oh, you got the list? I was waiting to say it up there. Just two names, quick. First of all, house cleaning. The code of Virginia, nineteen ninety-seven, twenty-seven years ago. Reads fifteen point two dash fourteen twenty-three. That's the update of two thousand and fourteen. In addition to being the presiding officer, the chairman or mayor. This is for town, I'm sorry, towns, cities, counties. The chairman or mayor's case may be, shall be the head of the local government for all official functions and ceremonies. He shall have a vote, but no veto. Your mayor needs to vote on every vote. Your charter is, I think, fifty-four years old. State law and Dillon's rule overrides this. It overrides your charter. So, you know, it looks like your mayor starts to vote like now because you know about it. And then you just get busy and update the charter. So that's that. Sorry, I was. You're voting. Now, the other thing I have a concern about, and part of this, um, I don't know how much is public yet. My concern is the property that, the old school, everybody knows that town wants to buy that. I came across in July tenth, twenty twenty-three meetings. The attorney then, Ms. Eric, she was telling the council that the owner of the property had declared bankruptcy. And all of his assets are frozen. That's an asset, so the bankruptcy would have frozen it last year. And then she said the council has a lien. And she was talking to the council about to recover the cause that she recommended that you get a hold of the trustee for the bankruptcy and get your name in line to recover part of it. So I don't know what you're going about that, but the problem is this property, this was only a year ago. And it took all of his assets into bankruptcy. So that means a trustee for the bankruptcy court is the only one that can legally sell that property or do whatever they want with it. I'm under the understanding that the owner has already been sent ten thousand dollars to finish cleaning it up. And then there's an offer on the rest. I don't know how the liens function back there. And my concern is, has anybody looked? Because the only way that he would have come out of bankruptcy is if he I did bankruptcy law later. The only way to come out of bankruptcy was to have paid all his debts and then taken it back into court and proven that. So that's not real likely. My concern is if the town is buying properties from a property owner who can't legally sell it and clear title. So I just, you know, I hope that before anything else happens, you know, it's not difficult, somebody in property, you do property search and get it cleared.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Jonathan Christian.
Oh, that was, that was the business.
That was the.
That was the laser.
Kelly Singletary.
Kelly. Jonathan Christian.
Kelly.
Oh, Kelly. All right. Kelly, I'm sorry. Hi, Kelly.
All right. So this is more of a personal note. I apologize. I really did not expect there were going to be this many people here. But I did want to take this opportunity to thank the town mineral for the lovely floral arrangement that was sent for my husband's funeral last month. And I want to thank all of you who took the time to come to his visitation and funeral. Our family truly was honored that you would take the time to pay your respects. There were so many other expressions of sympathy and concern. All which showed just genuine support and compassion that these fine residents of Mineral have. And I truly, I mean that. My personal thanks, especially to our town staff, Nicole and Stephanie, who have both stepped up to take on responsibilities to lighten my load. As all of you know, these two women work extremely hard and often very long hours to ensure that the town continues to move forward. They've managed the day-to-day functions of their own jobs while tackling my responsibilities as well. All with grace and plenty of good humor. That they would willingly and graciously take on added duties during this time is one of the kindest and greatest gifts I've ever received. I can't express how grateful I am to work with these women and for the town of Mineral. It really is in times of crisis and tragedy that we draw together, whether it's a personal tragedy like many of us have seen or a community crisis. The kindness and support and respect we show each other during our worst and most vulnerable times shows our true character and compassion. And I believe that character and compassion shines brightly in our small town. Our family is truly grateful to be surrounded and supported by a community that genuinely respects and cares for each other. So our thanks from our entire family.
Thank you, Kevin.
Brian, is it Thaler or Fowler?
Thaler.
Thaler. Brian.
I am here this evening to express my opinion as a resident of the town of Mineral and a concerned citizen. The aggressive and harassing behavior of councilperson Hempstead must be addressed. Beyond his hoard actions at the October meeting, he has also started a campaign of hatred against other members of council and my family. His actions are in short, are that of, in short, nothing other than a bully. I've dealt with bullies my entire life, and I've dealt with those who have tried to use my sexuality as a weapon against me. I've been punched. I've been kicked. I've had feces smeared on my personal property along with scrawled derogatory words about my community. I can deal with that. I have my entire life. What I cannot abide is an elected official who is supposed to represent my community using the same tactic, seeking to instill fear in these same members as another tactic to get his way, no matter the vote of council as the will of the citizens. I fear for my neighbors and friends and town staff who are unsure of how far his aggression will go. And I fear for the safety of anyone who disagrees with his opinion. I am gay. I am a former drag queen myself, and I stand up to bullies. I hope that each one of you in this room will join me in condemning his actions, only done to promote the agenda of hatred. And I hope that these, now that these behaviors have been addressed, that councilperson Hempstead will attempt to work with the other members of council for the betterment of our community without coercive and fearful tactics. I do put this out to you, Mr. Hempstead. I understand how these last few months have been trying and hard. But I do hope that as a community, we can come together. You were voted by the citizenry. They have some faith in you. I hope that you can prove that as a councilperson on this council. Thank you.
I don't know what you're referring to.
Claire Nipper.
Let me say, my name is Claire Nipper, three oh one West Fourth Street. Congratulations to those that won council seats. My condolences to you. I did not know, and I'm sorry to hear what happened. I want to also wish back to the state to both Ron and to Mayor Drives. Thank you for your service. What I want to, next thing we say. If I'm not mistaken, the fourteen homes that everyone is commenting about that Councilman or who says in his that he wants to get rid of, if I'm not mistaken, Vice Mayor, President of the Mineral Foundation, Historic Foundation, our forefathers that wrote, that did this town, mapped it out, those are laid on fourteen plots, correct? If I'm not mistaken, that's the size of plot those our houses are actually supposed to be on. Am I not correct? I believe I am. So you might want to look at our history, what this town is. Okay, we were not supposed to be on four or five plots. But that's how these houses have been set up. They originally planned on one house on one plot. So we are actually, those fourteen houses are following what they are supposed to be doing. Next thing, FOIA. I know that Councilman Hempstead, you had your, using your personal email. My suggestion, because I've had to deal with this in law enforcement and everything. Personal emails can be FOIA, if you did not know that, to include your cell phones. I believe our newly elected president basically said lock her up for using a personal email. So if you have information on there that has anything to do with council business in general, whether it had to do with you campaigning and town information came up, it can be FOIA. My advice to those on council, you put in a ordinance that within the past couple of years, you ask for anyone that has used their personal email to have it backed up on a thumb drive so that it can be kept in the
Filings list.
I'm sorry.
The filings.
Yes. And then lastly, when it comes to the schoolhouse. Don't know if anyone knows, there's a bunch of bats that are in the chimney. If not mistaken, they are on the endangered species list for bats here in Virginia. There are at least three of them that are endangered. There's another three that are slowly getting put, slowly going on to the endangered list. So before anything gets knocked down, need to find out if those bats really are on that list or not. Because it's going to be a pretty penny having them move. Or are you just going to have to leave that building, that chimney to where it is?
Thank you.
Becky McGee.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank everyone who voted for me. I will take my seat on council whenever I'm served that, so sort of. But I want to make a statement first. I've been going to the council meetings.
Claire.
I've been going to the council meetings ever since I resigned from council, and I am very disappointed in the chaos that's in this town. It is ridiculous. And I want to say that Bernie and Ed Cubey caused this mess with both Hempstead and Speeden by successfully controlling who dug and who does not get on town council. I think it would be appropriate for Bernie and Ed to apologize to council staff for the chaos they have created. And the citizens on the must, for the must, nothing has gotten done because of all this stuff going on. The civility pledge was adopted. The new civility pledge was adopted. And I don't think that the pledge goes far enough in order to prevent people from writing publicly and so forth by calling names as to I was the most vital person to ever been on council. I think not, I'm not on trial. So anyway, and Mr. Cubey keeps claiming that Michelle and I did something wrong because we found out that the register's office was still taking candidates. We did nothing wrong. And just because he didn't know it, he's saying that we did something wrong or that it was a coincidence or whatever, but that is not true. Also, I was accused of being malicious to the town staff. We settled that. We got through it, and we're good. And that is over and done with and does not need to keep being brought up. Nicole and I have become very clear friends. And so anyway, I appreciate all the people that have come to me with their concerns. I am for you, the citizens. And I'm hoping that we can keep this controlled by one family trying to control the whole.
You're tying yourself.
All right, wait a minute. Can I finish, please? Because you interrupted me.
Okay, I'll give you a minute to.
I just wanted to say that, yeah, I've lost my train of thought. But anyway, I'm trying to, I'm going to be positive from now on. And I will do my very best for the citizens of this town that have supported me. And I'm eager to start getting to work, and this chaos needs to stop now.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? I would see if there'd be any rush to podium, so I'll close the other comments. I'm going to interject my position just to say what's on my mind as the mayor. When you get into politics, it's not necessarily like it is TV, in some cases as may. But one of the things, once you're elected, you've got to have thick skin. And just because you have thick skin doesn't mean that things aren't hurtful and it gives you, as the public or as a human being, to say what you want to say. There seems to be, over the last few years, and maybe longer, a serious moral decay of public etiquette. When I was raised as a kid, some of the stuff, if I even uttered some of that stuff, you know, I wouldn't be here. I'm asking everybody to try to treat your fellow human being like you want to be treated. It's okay to disagree. This country was made on people disagreeing. But ladies and gentlemen, this is the United States of America. It's made up of a whole lot of different people. And we work together. This community needs to work together and quit every time trying to find an excuse to get people in an uproar. I'm ashamed to say that this campaign has not been as productive as I thought it would have been almost two years ago. I've never, ever, as the mayor, thought I was going to have to babysit adults and senior citizens, to include myself. I mean, wow. I'm okay with you coming in here and having a complaint or bringing it to my attention or my colleagues because maybe we're not as well schooled in either legal or smarts in other areas. And it's okay to say, hey, did you guys know that this code says this? No, I didn't. But you know what? We'll go back and check it out. And some of you have gotten personal phone calls from me, even though you might not think that we're getting back to you, we do. My job, when I came in, was to show some leadership and to get some of the things that we were doing written down as policies and standard operating procedures so that when something came up, we didn't need to have somebody come in and tell us. Because guess what? We got the policy. We've approved the policy by council, and that's the way it should be. And now and then we'll tweak it as the rules change. Or again, as we get a little smarter and say, well, this didn't work quite right, we're going to change it because we have some unique situations here. You know, I'm just asking for you to do better, to try to do better. Okay, I'm not expecting you to be perfect because I certainly am not perfect. I'd like to ask that we at least try to help one another. And when you're going down the road and you see somebody or you're at the post office, just say hello. If you don't like something, don't go to gossip. My phone number, my email, you can give me, it was twenty-four seven. I'll give you the straight skin. Because I'm just here to try to get everybody working together. I'll give you the straight skin because at this point in my life, I'm not trying to be the governor and I'm not looking for a higher office job. I'm sorry for, you know, stepping on my soapbox and stuff, but enough is enough. All right, approval of the minutes. If I can direct your attention to July eighth, twenty twenty-four. Once you do if there's any additions, subtractions, changes. Motion to approve as presented. I'll need a second. Michelle COVID has given me a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Okay. With that being said, direct your attention to July eleventh, twenty twenty-four. I have a motion to approve. I'll need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
See, ayes.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Moving to accounts page.
I handed them out to you guys. There were some out on the table as well.
Oh, our brother people might not have it.
They're, again, presented in report form. And I had said at the last meeting that they were going to be, they were going to start at October fifteenth. But instead, I did the whole October, so you could see the whole month. And we'll continue to do it this way. As soon as we get the reporting fix, we'll show a report that shows expense revenue. What is BMS? BMS.
BMS Direct is our tax company that we're using to print the tax bills. Yeah.
Bingo.
Anybody else have any comments or questions on the
Big cost for a Vexon. What is that called?
Um, there's two, um, calls. So the first call is covering, um, just getting our, um, kind of like our infrastructure setup. We're going to be transitioning from Gmail to Microsoft, um, and to Outlook. Uh, and then we're going to move everything over to the server that we purchased, um, the town purchased, um, a year so ago. What it was. Um, and so we're going to transition everything to the server to be more protected. Um, we have really good firewall and security, but we're not using it for what we need it for. So we're going to move everything over. So that's covering that. Um, and then, uh, we have a contract with them that is kind of like a help desk support type thing. So if we get in a situation where, um, something's wrong with the computer, or they need to, you know, fix something or whatever, we're going to do that.
So it's a high amount of money for a Vexon, something we should be looking at every month, or is it going to be?
Uh, no, this is our, um, install to get everything kind of set up. Set up, let me see. Uh, yeah. And then there's another one that's kind of like an hourly charge, um, for the year, like for a twelve-month period, um, that we said, you know, possibly these are the hours that we would need you. So we, they gave us a contracted price over twelve months. Um, I believe is what it was. And then that has not been paid off because that's not, we haven't used those hours.
Any other questions? I'll take a motion to accept.
I do not have a copy.
Um, if there's, no, if there, there were some on the table, if not, I can turn this off.
Here's one. Y'all can, we can copy it for you if you want to share. You can make a motion.
All right.
I gotta get faster.
A motion to, uh, accept the spreadsheet, second by Dr. COVID. All in favor? Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay. Under old business FOIA policies, um, one of the reasons I had this put on was we had some FOIA requests, uh, from the public and there seemed to be, um, a difference of opinion or no written documentation clearly stating that if an individual wanted a FOIA request, what, if anything, we were going to charge based on what they were asking for and stuff like that. It wasn't as clear as it could be. So, uh, I asked Stephanie to put it on the agenda, because this is one of those things that as council members, you all need to decide whether there is going to be a fee associated with a FOIA request. Uh, what that criteria will be in terms of if there is going to be a request, at what level. Is, is, is another one, is the individual asking for the last, you know, three months of the town council meeting minutes? And then on paper, versus electronic? And how long does it take? And what's the cost to reproduce it, if there is, or not? And do we charge a fee for manpower? And I didn't really know what those answers were. And so I'm pointing that to you all, uh, to either, uh, come up with something if you think you know something. Or we will formulate a committee to have you report out thirty or sixty days specifically. What you feel is reasonable. And in fact, then you can present it to your colleagues. And then if that's voted in favor, that'll be a new, you know, policy coming out. And staff, of course, is available to give you some ideas of what we found at other places, or how do you want to do it? I'm asking you all.
What is our current advertised policy for FOIA requests?
Uh, Stephanie, do you know that?
I didn't get your question.
What is our current advertised policy for FOIA requests?
Um, so we have a, we have a rights thing posted on our website. And then here, posted up on our website is the state code, um, which allows us to charge. Right now, we are only charging for, um, staff time and, uh, copy fees, which I try to do it electronically to get rid of this, that fee. Um, I'm charging in fifteen-minute increments, because that's what time I, that's how I charge you guys my time. That's the smallest I can do it. So that's how I'm charging anybody who sends a request. So right now, it's my salary. If I have to go to Nicole, it's Nicole's salary. Or if I have to go to Kelly, it's Kelly's salary. Um, and that's what we're doing right now.
And even if things seem really short, it, because I had asked her this question, by the time she redacts, that takes time. You know, and that's what it is. It's not so much as copying a bank statement, it's the time, the decisions to redact. And, you know, the consultations, what has to be redacted and what cannot, you know, we could try to redact as little as we can. And that's what is really taking the time. So. Um, and maybe we could have people FOIA, you know, letting, by the way, if they only want the balance, you know, and they can get that separate, then, you know, it would cut back on the time. So maybe we could educate them, asking for less information, and they would pay less.
Or asking for the more specific.
More specific, and then they wouldn't have to have the whole document, have to have it all redacted. So, um, maybe we should be, you know.
So being a former FOIA on the federal side, whenever we had an input from the public, especially they'll just like, give me all this, we usually picked up the phone, talked to the individual to try to narrow it to better understanding. And then based on that, we gather the information. Uh, again, I've seen it from, you know, the first fifteen minutes. It's, doesn't cost you anything, because it's all electronic. Maybe in here, if it's from a resident, you want to give them a certain amount. Because they are, after all, the taxpayer paying the bill. Uh, that's really up to you guys. And I don't know, you know, how do you want to do it? And so that's why I put it out to you. I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, especially if you don't already have something that you think is workable. If you want, you can put it up to next month, formulate either, you know, what, what's.
So the hard thing with the fee schedule, hold on, it's, it's hard, it's hard to do a fee schedule, because every request is individualized and take individual amount of times. It's not like a zoning request where she gets, she can review one zoning thing at a time. Everyone is different. So everyone takes a different amount of time. So, for example, if they came to me and said, I want to see all of Dave's emails. It's going to take me much longer to go through all of Dave's emails than it is, hey, I want, since we threw up the example, a bank statement.
Right. So we.
Talking about like per page B starters.
In Xerox.
Right. Breaking it down into components. And if there is a certain amount of time involved in doing it, then you can say up to fifteen minutes is this much, up to half hour is this much, uh, for research or whatever. I'll come up with a schedule that can give somebody an idea of what it would cost.
Um, and I will provide a cost estimate that's stated in the code, that if somebody asks me for a cost estimate, I have to provide. And I'm happy to provide it and a breakdown of how we got to this estimate.
What I'm getting at is you shouldn't have to do that for every individual request. If you have a basic schedule, then when you talk to somebody, you can say, well, and according to the schedule you use, this is what you can expect. But if you have to answer that question for every single person that calls, then you're taking your time for analyzing every individual request, and that's more than should be necessary. If we have basic schedules, and they can infer from that how much it's going to cost, and they could call and say, well, this is what I need. Do you, and per the schedule, it should cost this much. How does that sound to you? And that would limit the amount of time that you have requested in every single phone call.
So.
Um, we're going to lose Olivia and Bernice in less than a minute. Do we want to just go ahead and restart this real quick?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to restart. Give me a second.
I don't, I don't know, it's going to be.
I don't know either.